I'm going to call back to order the May 7th meeting 2019 of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. At this point, before we get into board discussion, I'm going to ask Sheriff Napier if he'd come forward and speak to us as well to these issues. Sheriff Napier, thank you for your patience today. Appreciate you being here.
Chairman Elias, honorable members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. This has been a long process and a contentious one, as we all know. I've listened to the concerns of the community, both positive and negative. I would say that we have come a long way since we were here last year. We've revised policies, revised practices, we've revised procedures, all in response to community concerns. We have policies where none existed previously. We have procedures that are more stringent than they ever were before. We have tried diligently and forcefully to address community concerns. In part, in that address, has been the sheriffs of the border counties, particularly Cochise County, our county, and Yuma County, going to the federal authorities and saying that we needed to broaden the scope of Stone Garden funds to include humanitarian aid and coverage of direct costs because we knew that was a concern of the community. And we've been successful in getting the federal government to re-scope Stone Gardens so that we can address humanitarian costs and indirect costs that otherwise would be borne on the backs of the taxpayers. And I think we've done a good job of that. We've heard the community concerns about the lack of transparency in the way that we keep records. That is a valid concern. Previously, there was no interest in these statistics, so we did not capture them. We only captured what Border Patrol required on the daily activity reports. We've revised those policies and procedures and would work with the community moving forward to ensure that we have the level of transparency that the community desires. We've developed an initial tracking system to allow us to do that. There was some discussion about 911 calls that are being transferred to Border Patrol. I cannot answer to what 911 calls were in 2015. I was working for the University of Arizona at the time. But since March of 2018, we have tracked 911 calls coming into our communications that are transferred to Border Patrol. We know now that 80 percent of those are transferred to Borde-Start successfully and involve rescues of migrants that call our department in distress. So there is a humanitarian aspect there. We have diligently worked with the community, tried to address the concerns wherever we can, and that's been affirmed by the county administrator. Many of you know I'm a family person. I'm a father and a grandfather, and I am also concerned about the spectacle of family separations that many people have spoken passionately about. I don't know how a father and a grandfather could be otherwise inclined. My department does not separate families. That's not part of our role. When we come into contact with somebody that we have reasonable suspicion to believe that the person might be in this country without property documentation, we turn that investigation over to our federal authorities, and they take the action that they deem appropriate and necessary based on federal law. That's not part of the responsibilities nor the authority of the Pima County Sheriff's Department. We've heard much discussion about racial profiling. I would ask the people to keep using this term to provide me examples of when that has occurred, and I will act upon them. But every time I've said that, I've not gotten a response where I've asked for very specific, tell me what vehicle number, what location, what deputy, and I will dutifully investigate it, but I've not gotten any such concrete information with respect to that. But I keep hearing that it is occurring very, very frequently. And I would ask the community, the activist community, which I don't think the activist is a dirty word, I don't believe so at all, to come to me with these concerns so that I can act upon them. But when I don't hear them except in these meetings, it's very hard for me to act upon them. Pima County and its deliberation of Operation Stone Garden funding is not alone. This fund has been accepted by the Tucson Police Department, the World Valley Police Department, the Marana Police Department, Cochise County Sheriff's Department, the Yuma Sheriff's Department, Santa Cruz Sheriff's Department. So we're kind of the lone out here of not accepting these funds. So we'd have to argue that all these other municipalities and jurisdictions are somehow prolifically racist in their acceptance of these funds. And I reject that. I know the people involved, and I don't believe that to be the case at all.
Sheriff, I'm going to interrupt you briefly.
Sure.
Does the Tona'atah Nation accept Stone Garden funds?
They have rejected them. The Odam people have rejected them. That is correct.
Sheriff Napier, I'd also note that Maricopa County does not accept Stone Garden funds as well.
Yeah, Maricopa County is not a border county, but you're correct. That is true. They've not even solicited those funds.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a request that the sheriff be allowed to continue uninterrupted his statement, and that if there are questions, we address them after his statement? I think that's the most courteous way to handle this.
That's fine.
Thank you.
That's okay. You all know I'm very high strung, right? No worries at all. Due to the grant submission due dates, we've had to submit our 2019 request for Stone Garden funding, even though this still remains in flux. We have requested upstream $2.7 million in the next grant cycle. So rejection of these funds would also summarily potentially reject those funds. We know that one of the provisions in the Operation Stone Garden package is that if we cease being an Operation Stone Garden participant agency, the $6 million-plus dollars worth of equipment that we've previously received could be recalled by the federal government, and that would have a pretty devastating financial impact to Pima County. The issue of 287G, which is cross-certification of our deputies, and the new warrant surface officer program have both been raised today, and I say unequivocally, we will not participate in either of those programs as long as I'm your sheriff, period. No equivocation on that whatsoever. I've been very, very clear on that. The other thing I've been clear on, much to the chagrin of my Republican friends, is my support of humane borders. That is also unrelenting. The establishment of water stations in the desert to prevent or diminish the death of migrants that are going to be there already, as a Christian person, I support fully. LPRs are already in use in Pima County. They're in use in my department and most of the law enforcement agencies in southern Arizona. I know from a civil libertarian standpoint, there's some currents there, but I think they're misplaced. The collection of this data and the availability of our deputies to scan vehicles to locate wanted missing persons, warrants, dangerous persons, and to also be able to chronicle the transaction of drug trafficking and the patterns of drug and human traffickers in our county is a valuable law enforcement safety tool, or I would not advocate for it. Find my notes here. I promised I would be brief, so I'm going to be quick.
Thank you, Sheriff.
There is no evidence that our past more than one decade of acceptance of Stone Garden funds have had a chilling effect on the Hispanic community contacting my department. I know that because we've researched that, and it has remained exceptionally consistent over the last decade that about 21 percent of the calls that come into the Sheriff's Department are from victims and witnesses of crime that we know to be of Hispanic origin. And that has not fluctuated more than one percentage point in the last decade, so there is no evidence to support that our participation in Operation Stone Garden would have that chilling effect. Moreover, since I became sheriff, we've implemented a policy that forbids, prohibits our deputies from asking about the immigration status of people that are victims or witnesses of crime unless immigration status is a facet of that crime. The same applies to school grounds. We have made substantive and meaningful progress over the last year, partially because we have worked with the community. I've made clear my intent to embrace a repurposing of the CLEPSY back to its original intent, and that was to provide me advice and oversight on Operation Stone Garden matters. I fully accept that. Remember that a year ago, that was one of the five conditions, and I accepted it then, and I don't reject it now. I want that community input because they see the community through a lens that I maybe do not see, and I find value in that. So I would welcome the repurposing of CLEPSY back to its original intent, which is to provide advice and oversight and help me with transparency issues. What do you want us to count? How do you want us to count it? And how can I better report it? There's been some issue about whether or not these funds should be directed toward humanitarian aid. The sheriffs have gone to Washington DC and advocated for that. I know because I'm one of those sheriffs. So the reallocation of some of these Stone Garden monies toward humanitarian aid is not only allowable, but desirable. The asylum seekers are being released into our county in record numbers. We have an affirmative obligation, once they're released from federal custody, pending their asylum hearing, to provide adequate care for these people. To use Operation Stone Garden money for that endeavor, I both support and fully advocate and have advocated for in Washington DC. In closing, I would just like to say this, that first of all, the activist community or the opposition, if you will, I would thank you. You've always been kind to me, and you've always been respectful of me, and I appreciate that, and I've always tried to reciprocate that. For all of you who've spoken in favor of Operation Stone Garden, I also support that because that's an affirmation of support of our deputies. I do not believe for one minute or one second that my deputies are racist thugs out there indiscriminately stopping people of color. I do not believe that, and I find that to be offensive. So that's why I do part company with some of the speakers. I don't believe that's our deputies at all. And if I can find evidence of that, we will deal with that, but I see no evidence of that. My time as sheriff has concluded. Pima County is my home. Pima County is my home. This is where I live. This is where my family lives. This is where I've lived for the last 32 years. This is where my granddaughter lives. If I did not believe in my heart that Operation Stone Garden was fundamentally important to public safety in our county, if I did not believe in my heart that it would not lead to disparate impacts on people of color, I would not advocate for this because more important to me than the office of sheriff is the fact that this is my home. This is what I care about. This is where I live. In conclusion, I would not support a grant that I thought for one second would cause my daughter's fiancee, Francisco Ortiz, who's from El Salvador, a higher propensity to be stopped by law enforcement because of our participation in this program. I would never support a program that I believe would cause that disparate impact on people of color. I thank you for your time. I thank you for your deliberation. What I ask this board to do is let's show the nation, the state, that we're better than this, that we could work together on a controversial issue and come together as a community to find a way to bring us a path forward. I stand ready to work with the community, the activist community, the opposition, if you will, to make that happen. Let's do the right thing today and show that we're better. It's easy to be in opposition to something. It's a lot harder to make something that's controversial, work for our community, and work for all of that community, and that's what I stand ready to do. So thank you very much for your entertaining.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. It's time for us to deliberate and be able to have an open discussion about this as board members, so I'm going to go ahead and start if it's okay. All right?
I don't think we have a choice if you say it's okay.
A nod of a head helps. I'll take it right now anyways.
Just trying to lighten the mood.
It's been a long morning. I realize that. Number one, I do want to say that I support the sheriff's office, and I support our officers and the work they do. With that understanding, though, we know that stuff happens out there on the street and that things change, and that racial profiling is an issue that affects all of us in America, not just the Pima County Sheriff's Office. I don't think we're unabashed thugs out there, but it does happen. It's happened to all of us. Frankly, it happens to me. That's just an issue that's a reality, and maybe we need to do a better job of reporting that to the sheriff if he's not getting that information. Conditions don't work, and they're not going to. Clearly, we acted in disregard of those conditions in the past, so I don't know how that particularly helps us out of this situation. I think the attacks that have been made on CLEPSY over the past year by board members have been very damaging to public processes as well, and I think they're unfounded and unfair. And I think that's really wrong-minded that we attack citizen volunteers. I'm glad to hear the sheriff say that he supports CLEPSY and wants it to continue its work. Family separations are another thing that happens that we just have to recognize is out there and that we can't entirely control. But the minute we send somebody over into CBD custody, we don't know what happens. So we are contributing to it, and we have to accept that. That's a very ugly reality, and that's why things have changed. The policies that we enforce regarding immigration have changed drastically, drastically. And we need to recognize that that's a problem for us because that's exactly coordinated with trust and trust in our sheriffs when they stop you, trust in our sheriffs when they walk up to their door. I want folks to be able to trust the Pima County sheriffs, not to live in fear of them, and I think that's a critical issue that still needs to be discussed. Equipment, Sheriff Napier talked about that briefly. I think we have some strong lawyers in our civil division that could make that argument about equipment effectively, and I fully expect them to. And we need to calculate in depreciation in all that equipment as it continues to depreciate with use. So those are only normal accounting principles, not asking for any great thing there, but our lawyers can work on that, and we can discuss that with the feds if, in fact, we decide to not approve and they decide to take back their equipment. I think that would be a huge travesty. The propensity for us to talk about immigrants as criminals, as diseased people, infects all our conversation. When we've talked about adding on humanitarian assistance to Stone Garden, we were required to make that nexus in a conversation with the feds. Mr. Huckleberry's memo, though, clearly buys into that whole mythology that migrants are diseased, they need public health, they need immunizations. That doesn't mean they're diseased. I'm sorry. That's wrong, and that's a sick thing to say. And then the memo goes on to say, "We need to protect these folks so they don't become vagrants and criminals." I don't know that any of our migrant visitors that we've had have been arrested for vagrancy, but I really doubt it. I really doubt that. So that mythology and that narrative that folks that are coming here are diseased and criminals of some type, probably true in some cases, but I would say that's directly commensurate to the number of people in the rest of our society that break the law. So it doesn't hold any weight with me. The discussion by Mr. Manus about a bridge being built serves to show us what disregard CBP and ICE have for the rule of law. Protecting the river is critical to us. It is how we exist here, and everyone else is required to have a Section 404 permit for doing that kind of construction. Those laws have been completely run over, just like you would asphalt when you're laying it down on a street. How sad, how disgusting. That affects our public health, let me tell you. That affects our public health deeply. Federal funds are taxpayer funds, and so this whole discussion of using Operation Stone Garden funds for humanitarian purposes, I'd like to believe is true. We have six layers of approval we need to get through before we could approve those funds. Local Border Patrol, National Border Patrol, FEMA, Executive Administration, and then two state agencies, Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. And you really want to know what's going on with that? Then you ought to take a look at the contracts that have been awarded to nonprofits that are doing relief centers all across this country. Just past week, Homestead was awarded a contract that I think is $340 million. A day later, they announced that one of their board members is John Kelly, former Chief of Staff for the President. Doesn't pass the think test, sorry. That's what's going to happen with those funds. They're going to go to people like Southwest Keys that have been providing those services to people. That's very sad, and we have no local control over that whatsoever. They won't even let us, our public health folks, inspect those facilities. We were gracious with Southwest Keys here. We provided them with immunizations when they did not have enough, and then they refused to pay us for them with the huge contracts they have. So whatever relief we might have, I certainly hope it goes to the nonprofits that have been so gracious and so good and helped us out dealing with this crisis that we have because that's really the correct way to do it. But I got a feeling that the money train's going to take over, and we will be left off the table, left off the table. 287G, all of a sudden, this mystery contract appears? I don't know how that happened. Wasn't signed by me, wasn't signed by any chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Sheriff Napier says it's not used, but we did expend $3,993 on it. I don't know how that happened. I don't know what that's about. We don't have any 287 certified officers, and I appreciate the sheriff saying that he does not want to be involved in that program, and I believe him because that would really be bad. But you see how we have a propensity to fall in line here? You see how we have a pattern of disregard for local authority? You see how we have a pattern here of people ultimately being abused by brand-new policies that have come out that have really damaged our communities in so many critical ways? So I remain opposed to Stone Garden. I'd make a motion that we refuse to accept these funds and hope that I get a second.
For the sake of discussion, I'll go ahead and second that motion.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Christie.
I may be in a position here where I might offer a friendly amendment to the motion, but I have to say that since the beginning of the Stone Garden grants controversy some 15 months ago, I have been a consistent and unwavering supporter of the Stone Garden grants, and my voting record reflects that. I have asserted and still assert that there exists a legitimate crisis along our country's southern border, and Pima County shares about 125 miles of that border. I have maintained and still maintain that accepting federal monies in the form of the Stone Garden grants and others serves as an integral and essential purpose and duty that aids our border law enforcement community in general and our sheriff and our deputies in particular. I have stated and still state that Pima County, through its Board of Supervisors, must support our Sheriff's Department and encourage collaboration and cooperation among the various enforcement entities whose selfless mission it is to protect the citizens of Pima County, the State of Arizona, and the United States. I don't know or understand why we are even having this discussion and debate and 15 months later are still having it, especially when this board's majority has been routinely accepting these very same grants for well over a decade. Further exasperating this discussion has been the majority of the commissioners on what is known as CLEPSY. My three appointees all come from experienced and knowledgeable law enforcement backgrounds. Most CLEPSY commissioners do not. I believe the voting record of CLEPSY shows that CLEPSY is incapable of rational decision-making. It places the law enforcement community at risk, and it should be abolished. Now we are faced with some $450,000 being suggested as being siphoned off from the main Stone Garden grant. Administrator Huckleberry has recommended 250 of these be taken to recover indirect costs associated with law enforcement protection and employment. Another $200,000 is recommended to cover humanitarian costs. Both costs are currently being picked up and paid for by Pima County taxpayers. It would be my strong preference that no money at all be siphoned off and that 100 percent of the Stone Garden grant goes to its intended and most useful and needed purpose, law enforcement along Pima County's southern border. In these matters, I look for direction from Pima County's highest-ranking law enforcement official, our duly-elected sheriff. We who sit on this board and some others who sit on CLEPSY are not experienced law enforcement experts. Sheriff Napier is. He has assured me and this community that he is fully aware of these two diversions, that he approves of them and that he is fine with them, and therefore, so would I be. By again rejecting the Stone Garden grants, we risk incurring the costs of having to return already-purchased equipment, incurring the costs of deploying our law enforcement assets, risking our local control over safeguarding the citizens of Pima County, and finally, we risk not being offered future federal grant money for law enforcement ever again. These are just some of the risks. There are many others. Accordingly, I would want to see how this particular motion and the second that we have on the floor goes, but I would like to offer a friendly motion to the current motion, and that is, we refer to the Administrator's Board of Supervisors memorandum of April 17th, where his recommendations on page nine and B10 and 10 be included in accepting the grants accordingly. But I'm assuming that the vote must go first on the motion at hand.
Let me clarify something. I won't accept that friendly amendment, but what I would say, I want to clarify my motion and that my motion is to deny items 16 and 17 on our consent calendar.
You're lumping them together.
If we want to separate them later, that's fine.
Well, you had indicated.
But for our purposes, I just want to make clear what's on the table right now.
Thank you, because you had indicated originally that we were going to separate.
I understand that, but I just want to clarify what I said so that there's not a mistake. If we want to separate them in a minute, that's fine, too. I'll consider that as a maker of the motion with a second. Supervisor Miller?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few comments to make. I have been down to the border in Aravaca. I went to the Chilton Ranch. I saw what those individuals down there were having to deal with. I saw videos of people crossing with backpacks full of drugs. I saw the folks who are on the front lines. They're in their late 70s, 80s. They're having to deal with this in their front yard, people that they don't know coming into their front yard with weapons, and they've got it on video. And I also saw the very large billboard right outside the Border Patrol station in Aravaca when you drive through. "We support our Border Patrol," and it's signed, it's painted on the sign, not with signatures, but the residents of Amado, Aravaca, and there were a couple other communities that I can't remember. I wish I had that picture with me today. It's a huge billboard-sized sign, and those people all support the Border Patrol that live out there because they know they're protecting them. So I wanted to get that out there, that I've actually gone down and visited the border. I'll be going down again soon, and I think everyone needs to go down there, do a walk along, see what's going on on the border, because until you go down there, until you experience it, you have no idea. And this vilification of the Border Patrol, I watched a report last night. They're diving out of boats into the Rio Grande River, saving fathers, children, babies. They're pulling them out of the water, they're babysitting them, they're feeding them, and they are taking care of them. And yeah, you can deny that, but that is a fact of what's going on on that border. And point of order, Chairman Elias, could you ask people to refrain from commenting until I'm finished? I listened respectfully to all of you. Please listen to me. I have voted to support law enforcement grants from the federal government since I was elected in 2013. As a matter of fact, in 2018, I voted yes twice for Stone Garden, and then that was in February, again in March, and then it was brought up for reconsideration six months later in September. I happened to be gone from the meeting that day. I had to be out of town for a family event, and I was not here to vote on it. I would have voted yes again. I don't know why I needed to vote three times in one year, but that's the way it works. No one expected it to be brought up for reconsideration six months after accepting it. I'm not sure what to say anymore regarding the Commission's agenda, and it couldn't be more clearly illustrated than with the vote of the Commission to reject $5,000 in grant funding that is for seatbelt and safety awareness, keeping children in safely restrained car seats. Who could object to accepting those funds? It is clear there is an agenda. The agenda of the Commission is clear: Reject anything and obstruct the Trump administration. Not the Trump agenda, as Barack Obama had the same policies and the same funding. We now have a Republican sheriff as well, and it is to obstruct his ability to do what all the Democrat sheriffs all the Democrat sheriffs before him have done, and that is to ensure the safety of this community. In a recent Green Valley News opinion piece, I think they said it, the editorial expressed it extremely well, they don't want to, and I'm quoting here, "They don't want to do anything that remotely supports law enforcement, even if it means sending a few babies through the windshield." The fact that those funds were rejected says it all. And then at your last meeting, I watched the videos, and this Commission accused Sheriff Napier of lying. I did notice that those accusations weren't directed to him while he was in the room. It was after he left. I have never heard a more absurd statement. Sheriff Napier has gone above and beyond in regards to working with the Commission in the name of transparency, and in his April 25th memo, he stated the department had not yet captured particular data that the Commission accused him of lying about. He wants to do that. He wants to get that data, capture it, and make sure he's doing it accurately and transparently. And that's what I saw in that memo, that's what I saw in the videos. He stayed there in the room until he had answered every single question that every person had asked him. He was there the whole time. He has removed ICE from the jail to alleviate your concerns. He expressed several other things that he's done to alleviate your concerns. It certainly didn't alleviate mine, as I'm now more concerned that they aren't, ICE is no longer in the facility. But that is the sheriff's call. That's his job, and he did that in an effort to work cooperatively and transparently with all of you and to give you a level of comfort in working with him. He did that in good faith. However, this Commission clearly is not operating in good faith. Your agenda has been clear from day one. The accusations that continue of targeting, obstructing, I've asked for that information as well. The Sheriff's Department data that they did have showed anything but targeting, and no one seems to have that data. It's just something thrown out there hoping that it sticks. Until you have the data, you shouldn't be making this statement. If you've got proof, bring it forward, as the sheriff said, he hasn't seen it either. However, you aren't just obstructing Trump or Sheriff Napier, you are obstructing and interfering with the safety and welfare of every citizen in this community. You are making this community and every citizen in it a whole lot less safe. It's not about whether it's a Democrat sheriff or a Republican sheriff. I voted for these grant funds when Sheriff Dukenick was here, when Sheriff Nanos was here. And again, this year, under Republican Sheriff Mark Napier, who doesn't make this about politics, who has tried to work with everyone, who has been a very honest and transparent sheriff, I'm going to still continue to support these grant funds requested by the Sheriff Department, and I strongly encourage my fellow supervisors to keep this community safe and do all you can to protect the community by voting yes. Thank you.
Supervisor Bronson?
Thank you, and I want to thank Supervisor Miller as someone who has, whose district includes all of Pima County's border with Mexico. I appreciate that she took the time to go visit it, and I clearly have friends on both sides of this issue as the only supervisor with a border with Mexico, and in the words of Mo Udall, "I always support my friends." But I have been concerned with the extreme rhetoric on both sides of the equation here and the misinformation that I've seen. As the representative from the Pima County Board of Supervisors to the Arizona Border County Coalition, I can tell you, one of my first concerns, what changed my vote early on was the 2017 DHS OIG report, Department of Homeland Security Office of Inspector General, in which they reviewed Stone Garden and had nine concerns, were concerned about the transparency, the accountability, and the efficacy. We, the Arizona Border County Coalition, recently met with both the Director of the Arizona Department of Homeland Security, who distributes these funds, as well as with top-level Border Patrol agents in the Tucson Sector. And what we learned, and I'm addressing Chair Elias's concerns, is that indeed if we reject Stone Garden funds, the equipment that was purchased with Stone Garden funds will be recalled and go to other agencies that are Stone Garden recipients. So we will have to return those, and we will have to replace most of it, not at the dollars at which they were purchased, but at today's dollars, which is going to be a greater amount. So that's certainly a concern. I think that those who spoke in opposition to Stone Garden are accurate in describing the rampant racism, but it's not just Stone Garden, it is a larger issue across the county and not specifically related to Stone Garden, and that has to be addressed. But I don't think Stone Garden is, one way or the other, is going to see that issue addressed. That has to be an issue addressed at the community level. Having said that, I too have visited the border on a regular basis, whether it's from Ajo to Aravaca, along the 286 corridor with the ranchers, along the Aravaca Road, or as we look at the drug corridor moving up from Robles Junction to Picture Rocks through Eber Valley into Penal County, I have seen firsthand, literally firsthand, what that drug corridor is like. And I think several people spoke about, and they are accurate, that the majority of the drugs come through points of entry. However, there are a number that don't, and I have personal anecdotal experience where I've encountered them along the Aravaca Road and hiking Sycamore Canyon, and that's recently. So that's a reality, that's a ground reality, and I've visited the ranchers, I've visited the folks in Diamond Bell, and there's fear on both sides of the equation, and rightfully so. Those ranchers and residents of Diamond Bell Ranch are really afraid to leave their property unattended because it will be broken into, or they, I've saw fences cut, cattle harmed. There is a real public safety nexus that I think those who are in opposition to Stone Garden seem to be denying. And again, I think there are real problems on both sides of this issue. And having said that, I'm going to offer, I'd like to make a substitute motion, and as follows. Regarding item 16, the acceptance, the Arizona Department of Homeland Security to provide for the operation of Stone Garden Grant Program over time and mileage in the amount of $1,218,018.96, move the approval of that with the following conditions. The county receives a maximum allowable indirect cost reimbursement of approximately 28.58% of the personnel component of this grant, which is approximately $256,919. B, that $200,000 of this grant amount be repurposed for humanitarian aid to assist local faith-based nonprofit organizations, and again, local, and I share Chairman Elias's concern about where this money would go, but I would say that it needs to go and must go to assist local faith-based nonprofit organizations through FEMA Grants Program Information Bulletin 436 for the provision of food, water, hygiene products, medicine, and medical supplies, housing and transportation to and from, and temporary and permanent housing of asylum seekers released to our nonprofit community by Immigration and Customs Enforcement, Border Patrol, or both. And then regarding, and C, regarding items B, C, and D under the recommendations from the county administrator submitted April 17, 2019, and included as backup material for the Board of Supervisors May 7, 2019, Consent Agenda Calendar Item 16, that the sheriff provide the Community Law Enforcement Partnership Committee and this Board with data regarding all Sheriff Department activities related to Operation Stone Garden missions, including appropriate time and effort verification per federal regulation, as well as the policies and procedure issued by the sheriff to deputies participating in Operation Stone Garden to ensure federal grant compliance without exception. If this information and data is not provided satisfactorily to the Board of Supervisors, the Board of Supervisors can terminate the grant similar to the way we did last year. And B, based on the information regarding the deliberate vandalism of lifesaving water stations, request the sheriff coordinate approximate security review for Humane Borders Water Stations and investigate any vandalism of said stations, and request the county administrator to prosecute, county attorney, I'm sure the county administrator would love to, request the county attorney to prosecute anyone who vandalizes a humane borders water station. And D, the sheriff reaffirms in writing to this Board of Supervisors his previous commitments to provide no office for ICE at the Pima County Jail and not to deploy Pima County law enforcement personnel to Border Patrol checkpoints for the purpose of performing pretextual stops, if such is requested by Border Patrol, and including the addition of appropriate staff from the county administrator's office to ensure the fidelity of the data being provided. And that's my substitute motion on item 16.
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman?
I have a motion and a second. Supervisor Miller?
I'd like to request that the sheriff come back up here, and I'd like to ask his opinion on whether this is acceptable to him or not.
I'd like to hear from Supervisor Valdez if he has any comments before that.
Sure.
He has not had a chance to participate in this conversation. You don't have to Supervisor, but I just think it's better before we bring the sheriff back up, if you have that opportunity, if you'd like, sir.
I'd like to do it after the sheriff.
Very well. Sheriff Napier, you can answer from over there. You don't have to get up, it's all right.
He did. He's probably tired of sitting like we are.
Yeah.
Sheriff Napier, you heard Supervisor Bronson read out the various conditions, I believe they were from the memorandum, one of the memorandums in the background material. I know, given a perfect situation, we'd be accepting these outright, and I just wondered what your opinion was, or is this acceptable to you in the situation that we're in at this time?
Well, as you pointed out, some of those conditions I previously agreed to. So some of those are water under the bridge things, I've already agreed to. With respect to the reallocation of those monies, we'll work with our federal partners diligently. IB 436 provides government guidance from FEMA that allows us a process to do that, which is relatively new, so the paperwork process of how to do that, we'll work through, but I will diligently pursue those things. Now what our federal partners do after I pursue those things, I have no control over, but I will diligently pursue those. With respect to the transparency of information, already affirmed that I would work with, I hope a repurpose CLEPSI, to provide me guidance on what we want counted, how we want it counted, so that we can all be assured that the data is correct, and I welcome input from the county administrator's staff to ensure, as an independent watchdog, I guess you would say, of the accumulation of that data and the fidelity of that data, I would also welcome that. I've always been amenable to transparency and to working with the community to make this work for everybody, so this is perfectly within my wheelhouse and I will accept those conditions.
Thank you. Thank you Sheriff, I'd just like to ask the, I guess, the county administrator, and what we're talking about is billing back for the indirect costs that we haven't previously recovered, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Supervisor Miller, I think there are two components. One is the indirect cost, which is allowable under the grant, and I think the second is the directed humanitarian aid to the local faith-based nonprofits, and both of those that are repurposing of the grant that you now have, and we'll go through that process for review and approval.
So that humanitarian aid, we're going to be billing that through the grant, am I understanding that correctly, or are we applying for additional funding for humanitarian aid?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, that is a humanitarian aid component that is allowable to be repurposed from the grant that is in total, and then it basically is a contractual relationship with the faith-based nonprofit to provide those services, and again, we're going to, you know, there's the bulletin that says all this is available, then there's the process of the mechanics that says, okay, and how does it happen, and that's the next step.
Okay, so under the grant, we're allowed to bill back for those humanitarian aid costs, and I know we are incurring costs.
You have to get a lot of approvals before that happens.
Right.
A lot of them.
Six of them, I think I counted.
Right, and I guess what happens if they come back and they reject some of those? I mean, hopefully, we're not going to be back here in a few months going, let's cancel the acceptance of this grant again. Hopefully, we can agree on, we apply, we learn as we go on what the acceptable types of aid are, that type of thing.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, what I heard in the motion is that this is subject to those items actually occurring.
Okay, so we could be back here in a few months. If the federal government rejects one of these billings for humanitarian aid, then we could end up back here in a few months, depending on the type of rejection or if we just continue applying for various types of humanitarian aid. The indirect, I absolutely, I don't believe there should be any issue with those because most governments do bill for the indirect costs associated with administering these grants. The humanitarian aid one was a concern to me, and hopefully, we do get other sources of funding for that, because I know we're incurring those costs, and they can't, we can't just release people into the community and expect, I think your point about, you know, increasing crime, I don't think it was intended to say these people are criminals, it was intended that if people are hungry, they don't have a home, they don't have any food, then that could cause a lot of problems in the community for those people. So I think it's, hopefully, there's other sources of this coming forward.
Thanks.
And it is, it's very sad, and people not being immunized and that kind of thing. We've got to make sure we protect not only them, but also other members of the community that are at risk if there are outbreaks of measles, the types of things that we're starting to see. And that doesn't mean anyone is saying they're infected vermin. We all, I've had measles, we all get these things. So we are...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That was not what was said, and I think if you're willing to, point of order, if you're willing to interpret everything in a negative way, then that's the way you're going to see it, but I did not hear that, and I don't think anyone intended that. We're all human beings, and we are all susceptible to different types of health conditions. conditions, if you will. So that, that is a concern, so I guess I'm, I'm, you know, glad that the sheriff is amenable to that, that...
Chairman Elias, Supervisor Miller, we have yet to accept the grant. So any expense reimbursement would have to occur after the acceptance of this grant. In other words, we would be able to illustrate that the county incurred this expense after approving the grant, and then we subsequently use the processes that are identified to us, which are new, to request federal reimbursement for those expenses that we have subsequently incurred. So we could not go back for the subsequent expenses that we had last week, for example, because we've yet to do the grant. I do, Chairman Elias, share your concern about federal bureaucracy. All I can tell you is that I will dutifully pursue the policies and procedures that are outlined to me in, in requesting that reimbursement, because it's the right thing to do.
And I, I do believe that the President has requested, what was it, four and a half billion in humanitarian aid that he's requested from the Congress, so hopefully, that'll be forthcoming. He made that request, hopefully, people will move and sit up at the table and start cooperating with one another to ensure that that aid gets out there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, four billion more for his buddies to get rich. So Supervisor Christie, please.
Just to recap Sheriff, the question that Supervisor Miller initially posed in response to the substitute motion by Supervisor Bronson, with the conditions and the recommendations, you are fine with all of them, and that you can work through all of them, and that you are in favor of the substitute motion.
Chairman Elias, Supervisor Christie, yes. To the, to the degree to which I control those variables, I will do everything I can to, to meet the conditions set upon me. Those are, some of them are easy, we've already agreed to do them, so that's, that's, that's easy. Some of these things, the new directive from FEMA allowing us to get the reimbursement for indirect costs in humanitarian aid is relatively new, so I have to explore the process of how to do that, but I'll dutifully pursue it.
So, as you have said in correspondence to me, the short answer is yes.
The, yeah. Supervisor Christie, the short answer, the concise answer would be yes.
Well, wait a minute, no Mark, what are you saying? Because you qualified your yes, and now you're just saying it's yes. What is it?
Chairman Elias, Supervisor Christie, it's not a qualified yes, it's the yes of the part I control.
You equivocated on that, please answer.
There's only a portion of this which I have domain over and control over. That portion for which I have domain and absolute control over, the affirmative answer is yes unequivocally. But I can't control that process, so I'll do my very best. That's my yes.
Thank you, I appreciate you answering honestly, because that's the whole problem.
You'll never hear any answer from me other than honest.
Supervisor Valdez, do you want to comment now, or what?
Thank you, Mark. Sheriff Napier. You know, Stone Garden reminds me of the story of two brothers. And if I remember the story correctly, it was about two brothers and one dog. And the both brothers went to their parents and said, "We want a dog, we want a dog, we want a dog." And one brother looks at the other brother and says, "I get the front end, you get the back end." Except Stone Garden is a little bit like a dog with two back ends. In, in truth, and we've set it up here already, and a lot of, a lot of thought and a lot of deliberation happened in September and all last year, leading up to today again. And the truth is that this is a very difficult decision. Like Supervisor Bronson, we've been elected officials since 1997, and this is probably one of the most difficult decisions we ever have to make, because it's bad and bad. Because, make no mistake about it, there are bad consequences both ways. And that, if we remember correctly, when September, we turned down this contract, was a concern I had back then as well. In, in truth, the difficulty in this is that we are a ship in the middle of an ocean, and we don't control anything beyond the rudder of our own little tiny ship. So the truth is that, you know what, I, it, it's my intention to vote no, because the same conditions that existed in September still exist today. And remember, part of my condition and part of my biggest concern then was that we have the potential, and remember, it's the potential, for creating pockets of crime in immigrant and minority communities, in this community, where they don't feel they have the ability to call a sheriff's deputy. And I've seen what the sheriff's deputies do, they're heroes, and nothing short of heroes. But if you can't call them, what kind of country are we living in? But understand that even though I'm voting no, I also understand that that's guided consequences. And so I caution both sides in this argument to understand that there are consequences to your side, and we need to work together, try and mitigate those consequences, so they lessen the effect on the people that we love in this community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. I would comment that actually immunization rates in Central America, where most of our migrants are coming from, are actually better than they are here in the United States. So...
So based on that, we won't, we won't have any humanitarian costs?
No, you'd like that, but that's not the way it's going to roll. All right, roll call, please.
Pardon me? Item sixteen.
For Sharon's motion?
It's just item sixteen.
It's the substitute motion.
Yeah, it's just item sixteen.
That's correct. It's correct. Go ahead.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Valdez?
No.
Chairman Elias?
No. Motion is approved, three to two. There's, I'll go ahead and make a motion to say no to approving item seventeen. Saying no to item seventeen. Motion dies for lack of a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Bronson?
I would like a motion, make a motion to accept item seventeen, Arizona Department of Homeland Security to provide for the Operation Stone Garden program equipment in the amount of five nine five six zero zero, deleting the license plate reader purchase price of thirty-three thousand six hundred dollars, and that no license plate readers be purchased.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Valdez?
No.
Chairman Elias?
No. Motion carries three to two. We're going to take a lunch break, we'll be back in forty-five minutes.
I'd like to call back to order the May 7th, 2019 meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. We have one executive session that we need to do, should be very short. I'd entertain a motion to move into executive. Any objections? Hearing none. We'll be back in just a few minutes, folks. I'd like to call back to order the May 7th meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors, 2019. We've been in an executive session. Counsel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Executive session, item eight on the agenda, involves a proposed settlement in Jennifer Chansley et al. versus County of Pima, Pima County Superior Court case number C-2018-1178. Under the terms of the proposed settlement, the county would pay $95,000 to resolve all claims in this lawsuit. County Attorney's Office and County Administrator recommend approval of the proposed settlement.
Move the county attorney and your office's recommendation.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. We're on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
I'd like to divide the question and vote on item 26 separately.
Okay, item 26.
Meeting minutes. Just a correction. Mr. Chair-
I'll move-
Yeah, go ahead.
The remainder of consent excluding item 26.
Second.
I just move to approve it. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item 26. Supervisor Miller?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a correction on the meeting minutes. It's on page 19, as numbered by the clerk, and it is, the word "could" should be substituted for the word "would", and it's in the paragraph where it says, "Supervisor Miller inquired about the county administrator's memorandum, which indicated that 95% of the individuals living in the household would be undocumented." I said "could be undocumented."
So it should be "could"?
Yeah.
Correct, except correction.
That's, that's all.
I move item 26 with Supervisor Miller's correction. Motion and a second discussion. Objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you Supervisor Miller. We're on to item nine, item 10. Supervisor Valdez.
Mr. Chairman, this was continued from the previous item, and again, this is really to provide the community law enforcement partnership commission with the, really staff support on the grant funding. But in light of what happened before lunch, we may want, we may want to have the Stone Garden component added back to the CLEPSY as the sheriff indicated earlier. From the grant perspective, but this is about having that discussion with the sheriff that he was talking about when he was up here. It returns the scope. Bless you. And that's not by way of motion. I really want to have a discussion about it.
So you're not making a motion?
Not quite. I want to have a discussion about that idea.
So previously, I think you had, oh, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Supervisor Miller.
Previously, you had recommended that the administration be moved under the Grants Department. So, and now, and didn't that include Stone Garden? It didn't? Or did I misunderstand?
It did, and I need to be more explicit. What I'm suggesting is to put this back under, or put this under grants, and because obviously they're going to be reviewing grants and giving recommendations, advisory recommendations to this board, but in light of the fact that we passed, adopted Stone Garden about two hours ago to also just restore some of that discussion so that the sheriff has a group where he can have that dialogue with them.
Okay, so the administration might be under grants.
Correct.
Okay, and then the- Would it still be a commission appointed by the board?
Yes.
Okay, okay. It's the same commission, correct?
Mm-hmm. If there's no further discussion, I'll move the item so that we move the approval and add, again, the Stone Garden component for that discussion with the sheriff, as the sheriff outlined earlier.
Mr. Chairman.
Second. Supervisor Christie.
I'd like to offer a substitute motion, and that motion would be that the CLEPSY would be dissolved and discontinued completely by the Board of Supervisors.
Second.
I, I'm, I'm, what did, what did you just say?
My substitute motion.
Oh, okay, okay. So we have a substitute motion to second it to eliminate CLEPSY completely. A discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I've always been a proponent that the CLEPSY is not a functioning committee. It is not designed for what it was intended to do, and it should not be under the board's supervision. If the sheriff wants to have a citizens advisory committee, it should be under his purview, his direction, and his makeup. He can set the agenda, he can set the time, the places, the requirements, but it is, my motion would state that the CLEPSY in its current form be dissolved and disbanded and that the Board of Supervisors has no authority, jurisdiction, or control over it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Roll call. This is the motion to dissolve CLEPSY.
Supervisor Bronson?
No.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Valdez?
No.
Chairman Elias?
No. So go back to the original motion, which is moving the administration and management of the commission over to our grants and management staff and adding back Stone Garden and its review and its administration to the CLEPSY. Everybody clear on that? Discussion? Roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye. Motion carries four to one. We're on to item 12. Chair, move the item. Motion and a second discussion. Objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. We're on to item 13, including Resolution 2019-31. Chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. We're on to real property, items 14, 15, and 16, A and B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move those items along with Resolution 2019-32, 33, 34.
I have a motion and a second to approve items 14, 15, and 16, A and B, including Resolutions 2019, 32, 33, and 34. Discussion? Objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. We're on to franchises, licenses, and permits. These are hearings. We have one speaker signed up. Only if necessary. Teresa Morse.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no one in the audience who wishes to address as an opposition to these items, I'm going to move the close of public hearings and approve items 17, 18, 19, and 20.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve items 17, 18, 19, and 20 on the regular agenda. Discussion? Objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. We're on to item 21, case number P-18RZ00012, Robert Lee Boykin. We have two speaker cards that have been completed, so I'd like to hear from those speakers before we have a staff report, or would the board rather hear some kind of staff report first?
The speakers are fine.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear the staff report before we hear from the speakers.
Very good. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, before your request for rezoning of approximately 9.7 acres from SR to CR4 that would allow for 45 lots, to date, staff has received some letters of concern regarding traffic congestion, road conditions, and significant amount of concern regarding flooding potentially downstream from the site. The applicant went before the design review committee and received an approval for exceptions to the Hillside Development Zone overlay elements. Included in that, and which carried over to the Planning and Zoning Commission where it was also approved, are certain stipulations, including an additional setback along the western property boundary, and a commitment to construct single-family homes to match those that are existing single-family homes, to make sure that there's a compatible area there between the two developments. The Planning and Zoning Commission, like I said, recommended approval. The subject property is outside the Mavene Marie Behan Conservation Land System, and that concludes staff's report.
Okay, we have two speakers. First speaker's going to be Cynthia Marodas. Thank you for being patient today. I know it's been a trying day.
Can I turn on the overhead?
Everybody, yes. It'll come on right now. If you place your item where that gold marker is, it should be on the screen momentarily.
Can I have a little extra time? Several people had to leave or couldn't make it. I appreciate it. My name, thank you chairpersons and supervisors. My name is Cynthia Marodas Montenegro. I, they don't have it up yet? I have property here, and this is the rezoning here.
Where's your property again?
I developed this five acres here.
Okay.
Myself and the neighbors would not have a problem with rezoning or the development if they could do and did in the past what they've claimed they are going to do or what they're required to do. In as much, just a few of the things that I'll get to the main option was like they said they were going to not do two stories next to one of the neighbors who complained, and they did. They, we told them we had a well. We have a well side right there. And we told them, you know, don't direct your water at it. They did. But the biggest concern is every time they bring in a new subdivision, they're flooding out the neighbors. They are adding water to the neighbors. When they put in the Suncrest subdivision- When they put in the Suncrest, uh, subdivision- Which is here, it's misspelled, it says Suncrest, but it's Sun, uh, Sunquest, it's Suncrest. They flooded Boykin's property, which is the one to be developed here, and then down the road. And those neighbors had, had real flood issues and water issues, and they've made complaints. Then when they brought in this subdivision, which is, uh, Pima Farms, they, uh, he, Mr. Borkin, which my husband had talked to, and a lot of other people have, saw that he was getting all this water from these different subdivisions, and he saw the subdivision coming in and building up walls, and he decided to fill his property, to, and then to sell it. Because at the time, the market was really hot at the time. Of course, the market took a dive after that, so he never did sell it. So, uh, let's see. I sent this out. So the water comes shooting across here and down this way, and supposed to come into the subdivision. This is when, in two thousand six, when they were developing this. So he brought in dirt, and the, it doesn't show on this because it's black and white, but if, the, the one I sent probably would be better. But you can see he, on the maps, he's filling here, 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 down here. And I think the subdivision wasn't designed for that much water to come through, because it was planned before he filled. So we're getting flooded. This property, so now what it does is it goes through his prop, some of it comes through here and come on down. It comes around this property, floods these properties, comes through this property, floods us and puts ditches in our property, which we didn't have. Then comes in through here and fills these properties up. And there was a gentleman who lost the use of his, um, building, a could-size building, because it had a foot of water, other people would put a foot of water or more through their properties. Have to build up, this gentleman, um, this lady was here, but she left her, for her relatives. It's been flooded, this gentleman's had a lot of flooding, but he didn't come because he looked at the plans and he says, oh, they're going to put a wall, they're going to put houses, they're going to stop this flood from coming through. Well, it's not, they have to let it through, he doesn't understand. This particular plan, goes right down. Shows water coming in here, here, and here, and coming out here, but the majority of the water comes down here. It's supposed to go out here, but where is it getting in there from? And he's going to be flooded, they say this is vacant, it's not vacant. The lady was here today, that was her property. And I feel bad for him because he filled it because everybody else's water came to him. And this wasn't the first time this was a problem in this area, the big retention area at the bottom of the hill, which is at Camino de Weste in Massengel, it's huge, was put in for the same problem, because they had too much flooding, and so they had to put a retention area in there, it's huge. And it empties out into Massengel, which is the road down below. And that is like a river. It's, when I ride horses, I could not get up it, I would go around to openings, when I ride bikes, I couldn't get up off the road. It's like that high, two feet up. It runs. Last year, they had a kayak in it, they had skiers in it. The people who live off of Camino de, um, Massengel cannot cross it with a car when it runs. So they're stuck in their homes. And what worries me is there are kids who have to go home, the bus drops them off on one side, how are they getting across this? I mean, I don't have a nine-to-five job, usually I can wait until it subsides. But some people can't, bus driver can't, he's got to take the kids. Something needs to be done, you keep rezoning. Across the street, let's see. Here was rezoned, so that's going to be developed. Down the road is another rezoning, that goes to the main one down here, and then comes down here and comes through. All this rezoning, it's fine if it works, but how do you take all the water that comes in, and reduce it before it goes out, and control all the water that comes off the roofs, and all the water that comes down the streets, and make it less, yet allow enough to come out? It's, I don't know if they know how to do it, I don't know if they can, because I have not seen it done. It's not happening. But also, part of the problem is, and I don't know if he should be the one in trouble for it, is he filled it. Now, if you bought, were about to develop something, and you went and filled it, that would be illegal, because you changed the water flow. But he filled it knowing he was going to sell it and develop it, so he filled his property, he changed the water flow. When Pima Farms came in, they weren't set up to handle that water flow. They think it's okay, because you're saying, telling them, it's going to be ten percent less, they say, oh god, something better. They're in trouble, because they have all the sand coming through. They have sand coming through because he brought in the sand when they drudged all the retention areas, oh boy, free sand, fill me up. And so they're going to get rid of the sand, because they're going to put paving in. That was coming through and filling up the, some of the retention areas, and their streets, their streets get full of sand. So they're all for it, because they're told it's going to be less, but I have yet to see it be less. You know, they say they can't do it, but it seems to me you should help him solve the problem by giving him extra room for retention. Something needs to be done that, at, every time they put a new one in. And this new subdivision across the way, it's a hill. And low spots around here, so those are going to be, it goes straight into his property. So that, I, that's just my concerns, we've been flooded. We have to rent tractors. Now it's going to, and go out, out there and fill the holes, we have a young, a lady that lives in the area, she's constantly flooded. We had to rent a tractor so she could get into her property, because it had a drainage ditch. When they divert the water to us, it's through an eight-inch pipe or a two-foot, um, weir. So it goes through the weir, then goes through the eight-inch pipe, and it shoots out through our properties and puts ditches in it. And they're only about two foot, one and a half foot wide, and two feet deep, but you can't get a car across it. And so they're coming through our property like that, and we're having to rent a tractor and go over there and fill that, and we have to rent a tractor and get dirt and put it around our well, so that it's not being flooded. And that's the other one, you're saying, well, that's not him, but he created that problem by filling his property.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller.
How long has this been going on?
The, this picture is oh oh six.
Two thousand six.
The picture I have of the, um, dirt being filled in, so they, they, they developed, started developing the property and knows, I don't know exactly, but it's been a while.
So I have this clear, so there's been multiple different subdivisions that have come in.
Yeah, Suncrest was a long time ago, Mr. Borkin lived there forever, some of these neighbors are fifty, been there fifty years or more.
Since two thousand six, that you're saying have contributed-
No, two thousand six is when he filled his property and they put in Pima Farms, and after that, we had problems. That's my property, Borkin's problem, property, had problems before that for prior subdivisions that came in.
Okay, so this is, uh, this sounds like multiple subdivisions have gone in over the years that have contributed and made it worse.
Probably goes back fifty years, as they put a subdivision in, then they had to put the retention pond in at the bottom of the hill there, huge retention pond. And the water gets diverted to Mass, Massengel. And then they put one in, I don't know, it might, I don't know how long ago Suncrest came in. But we talked to the neighbors, some of the neighbors have been there thirty and fifty years, and they flooded those neighbors, and him.
So this, this problem has been-
My problem has only been since they put Pima Farms in.
Which is two thousand six, is what you're saying.
Two thousand six.
So these problems have been getting significantly worse over the years, is what you're saying, as a result of all these barriers?
Well, no, because before Borkin filled his property, we didn't get all this water. And before Pima Farms did, so we didn't have the problems. Borkin had the problems before two thousand six from prior subdivision. Borkin's and Pima Farms people had the problem from a previous subdivision. The, um, retention area was put in from way before that. So I don't know how long ago that problem came up, but I had a gentleman who, who was supposed to get me, who has a letter, you have it, from Mr. Miller. He's lived there fifty years, so he can tell you there was a problem, they put the retention in. Then we didn't have another problem at our property, but Boyk, Boykin had the problem because of the subdivisions around him, and then, so, he's been there longer, I've only been there thirty years, thirty-some years. And I live in the neighborhood and, and own a number of properties in the area.
So, um, these are existing problems, I'd like to have, as, when you're finished, if you're done, I'd like to have staff address this issue with the flooding and, and what has happened with that?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, Supervisor Miller, um, myself and, and Dr. Greg Sacks of, of the district will, will try to sum it up, so as it relates to the proposed rezoning, if this is approved by the Board of Supervisors, the next step for the developer will be to submit a subdivision plat. With a subdivision plat, there will be a higher level, more advanced engineering and hydrology. And because this is a mapped critical basin, the developer will have to engineer and provide a, a reduction of, no less than ten percent, a reduction of flows from the development they're, they're causing on the site, so uh, there are tools for them to do that, to reduce the flows coming off, off the site today. Um, and it could even lead to potentially, if it's, if the engineering requires it, they may lose lots, it's a potential outcome. So, uh, i- in some, there is a lot of historic flood control issues out here, um, but because it isn't a critical basin, and we have, I think, better subdivision review now than, than we used to, we will have the flows from the site, from the immediate development, reduced by ten percent, that's going to be a requirement. And I'll let, uh, Dr. Sacks fill you in on the history of the area as well.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Greg Sacks from the Pima County Regional Flood Control District. I prepared the staff report that's in your package on the rezoning, as well as responses to the complainants. Deputy Director Eric Shepp asked me to be here to answer your questions, so thank you for the opportunity. Pima Farms subdivision indeed had some historical problems, since that time, the district has updated its retention-detention manual to ensure that the more frequent low flows are addressed. When you hear the terms retention-detention, you know, detention is reducing, as Chris said, by ten percent, the flows that come onto the site now. And then one thing that Pima Farms didn't have, that all subdivisions, since you approved the floodplain management ordinance, is first flush retention, so that the lower flows, the more frequent flows, are also addressed. So we've made changes to the ordinance that you've approved to address the shortcomings of historical subdivisions in the area, and we've updated the current subdivision standards, so that the impacts are mitigated for current development.
So, uh, the current standards are you have to reduce that flow by ten percent that comes off the property, correct?
Yes, the flow, well, it's, it's reducing the flows from rainwater that falls on the site. Washes that flow through the site are not reduced, because they're not the applicant's problem.
Okay, and then, um, has anything been done to address, it sounds like there's pretty significant flooding, has, have, have complaints been filed with the flood control department, has anything ever been done to address their issues with the flooding throughout the years?
Indeed, Commissioner Miller, going back to two thousand and six, these are all of the complaints that have been submitted, um, directly relating to the neighborhood. And, um, unfortunately for the property owners, you know, the flood control district regulates a hundred CFS and over, so a lot of the flows they're dealing with are considered non-regulatory flows, such as FEMA sheet flood X zone, where the applicant's property is located, or not the applicant, the complainant's property, I believe.
So they're less than a hundred-
Yes.
Cubic feet per second, is that?
That's correct.
So if it's less than a hundred CFS, we don't address it?
It's addressed by the building code, not the floodplain management ordinance as site drainage.
Okay, and in the building code, is there anyone here from the building codes department, how is that addressed there?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Miller, development services also includes the building department, so what uh, Dr. Sacks is alluding to is at the time of subdivision plating, that is when the site group will enforce the critical basin ten percent reduction requirement. What we would not do, though, is respond to a complaint downstream, again, that's, we leave to the, to the district, so as development comes in, we do, and are able then, to apply the newer, better regulations.
Okay, so that's when this issue with, that is specific to that property, because it sounds like these flooding issues are a result of a whole lot of other building that's gone along around this area.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, I would agree, it's the nature of the topography and the history of development in this area, correct?
Okay, so it's really, uh, when he comes in to do the, uh, final, um, building plans, that you will be addressing this? Ensuring that, that it's reduced by, um, ten percent, the flows off the property?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, and I don't know if the, uh-
I, I would just make a comment if it's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I think we should just continue this rezoning until we have the developer in the room, so that he can, or she can.
The, the developer's representative is-
Oh, there you are, come on up here. Let's talk.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't know what the order was.
I was wondering why you're so quiet there, Jim.
Well, I always defer to however the board wants to proceed.
What I, 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 I can't speak for Supervisor Miller, it's her district, but I'd like to hear some acknowledgement of this, and that you're going to deal with this at the time of, um, final approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to do just that, I was kind of chomping at the bit over there, but-
I don't blame you.
So, yes, the, the issues that raised historically, well, first of all, Jim Portner, Projects International, representing the owner and the applicant. Um, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, I'm not going to go through the whole presentation here, given the length of the day, I think staff covered the issues, so I'll just, just going to jump right to these-
That's fine, please.
That have been put on the record. So yes, there are historical issues there, I think it's important to stress, how clearly is that showing up? So this is our property here, we're kind of the donut hole, around which all this development has already occurred, or been platted to occur. And the speaker is correct, lots of development has occurred over the years, and staff is correct. Lot of the subdivision regulations under which these older subdivisions were done, were very weak compared to what we deal with now. This Pima Farms is the most recent project that was done, but we've even strengthened the floodplain regulations since that was done back in two thousand and six. Where the speaker lives down here, this was the majority of concern I heard at my neighborhood meeting, and in all my interactions with the neighbors subsequent to our neighborhood meeting. Their complaints, their concerns are what's happened ever since Pima Farms occurred, and what's coming off that subdivision impacting their problem, they're impacting their properties in ways that are completely different from how they were prior to that subdivision's construction. I can't control what was done there, nor the maintenance or whatever, I know the flood control district does have a procedure and a mechanism by which they can put complaints forward and initiate an inquiry, and I believe enough complaints have been submitted now that that can proceed. All I can control, however, is what we're going to do with this project, um, and as for the preliminary development plan that we have put forward, we've already oversized the basins, um, over what they need to be volume-wise, to ensure that we meet or exceed the ten percent reduction. But the most important thing, I think, is not just the pure reduction, and by the way, Chris talked about how anything over a hundred is regulatory, that's true. But it doesn't matter, whatever flow, flow is coming in, whether it's five CFS, twenty-five, or whatever, we still have to accept that water, deal with it, manage it, and meter it out in a controlled fashion, and meet all the current subdivision regulations, which is what we're doing with this proposal. And we already know that we have oversized basins volume-wise to ensure that ten percent reduction. But what I think the most important thing is, not so much meeting that big umbrella, but it's dealing with what's happening right now, which is, when this is kind of the hole in the donut and the undeveloped piece, there is a lot of water that comes across it now in completely unfettered and uncontrolled fashion. And it comes across through here, enters this subdivision here, and it carries a boatload of sediment and other crud, because these are unimproved drainage channels here, and they're slowly getting eroded with every small storm, not just the big ones. The everyday little routine storms are coming through here, dumping sediment and crud into this subdivision, and indicating that as it comes through this subdivision, there's probably clearly impacts coming across our property into this subdivision, that now are going to get fixed, are going to get cleaned. get fixed, are gonna get cleaned up, are gonna be subject to all our current regulations. And I think the most important thing is not the big storm impact, which we'll already have covered, but all of those little intermediate routine storms that now come through and dump crud and sediment into this project are now going to be captured, held in our basins. The, the volume of sediment, because of the velocity, is knocked out of it while it sits in that basin. Clean water is metered out into this subdivision. So I think overall, and I think staff would agree with me on this, if there's any potential impact from this subdivision being developed under today's standards, it's a slight improvement in the situation for what happens downstream over what we're experiencing now.
Any questions for Mr. Portner? What's the pleasure, the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
You can come up and point one thing out. I have another speaker card, Karen Grab, but I don't think she's here.
She had to leave.
Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to make sure, but, but please do.
At the bottom of the subdivision.
And I spoke with Karen before she left, I'm glad to share that with the board if you'd like.
And, I'm lost here. Okay. Yeah, she's down, she's down here.
Well, that's one of her properties.
One of their relatives, so these properties down here were badly flooded still, too. I understand the 10%, and that would be great, but my concern is, it's not just the 10%. One of the reasons that we have trouble with Pima Farms is that he filled the property.
Right.
The idea that you can go fill your property and then go sell it and not have to deal with the extra water, I don't like that. That's my problem.
I agree.
Okay?
Okay.
Can I respond to that, since we're kind of responsible?
Please do, Mr. Portner.
Whatever happens historically is almost-
Yeah, you can, Mr. Portner.
Okay, thank you. Whatever happened historically is almost immaterial in that we have to accept the situation the way it is now and fix it. And that's what we will do with our subdivision plat, our subdivision engineering. And as far as Karen goes, I spoke with Karen, she owns property here, she owns another property further south, and one further to the west. And she just said, "Jim, my concern is just, I wanna make sure I'm involved going forward in understanding exactly what you're doing, where you're letting water out, how it's gonna be metered out, and all those kind of things." And I think the board knows, once I do a rezon, I don't just disappear. Um, and I promised to Karen that when we get to the subdivision engineering stage, I'll take the plans under my arm, I'll go see her, I'll sit down with her, walk her through all the details and answer whatever questions she might have. And I'm willing to do that with the other speaker and anyone else who might be interested when we get to that stage.
Where are the drainage basins that you are proposing?
Our preliminary development plan shows two, Supervisor Miller. One here, it's kind of, how well does it show up? It's kind of this-
Light color.
Grayish, brownish, greenish. So there's two of them. And they're, they're not arbitrarily chosen. We have to put them where the water presently leaves the site. We have to match that. We can't divert it. That's illegal. So we have to accept water at all points where it comes in, and we have to exit it from the property at the same place as it exits now. To do anything else is not, not allowed. So that's why the basins are located where they are. They are sized the way they are because of the volume that they have to contain to ensure that 10% reduction. A smaller amount of water is being handled by this basin than this basin, and that's why this one is bigger, deeper, and has a greater volume.
So in effect, that's going to improve it, with the basins there, should improve it for these folks, even though the other, there's drainage issues from other developments there that have existed for years, but this should improve that situation?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, that is correct. And like I said, too, there's not just the, the 10% reduction is for the hundred-year event. That's the big mother of all storms. But again, these, these basins have, uh, a much more daily impact and benefit, I think, because they grab the small routine storm and also hold it and meter it out as well.
Okay. Um, thank you, and that's all the questions I have. And, and I, I think it's good that you will be working with the, the two neighbors that are, that have the concerns, and I don't know if they're, that, that are just south of there. I know Jim will work with you, and, and hopefully that will resolve a lot of the situation with the water. Unfortunately, if it was there previously, it kind of puts all the onus on this one development. But I think it should, it appears that it's going to improve it, the conditions for the folks in that neighborhood. If, um, no one else wants to come forward and speak, I'd like to, um, close the public hearing and approve rezoning P-18R-Z-00012. Robert Boykin, North Camino de Oeste rezoning with approval subject to span, standard and special conditions as recommended by staff and approved by planning and zoning.
Second.
Motion in a second to close the public hearing, approve case number P-18R-Z-00012, subject to standard and special conditions. Any objections? One noted for the chair. We're on to item 22. This is a hearing for zoning code text amendment. Roger Carpenter was here earlier, and he left a statement that he wanted to have read into the record regarding this, so I'm gonna go ahead and read that. That's okay with everybody? "Thank you for hearing our proposal. We merely ask that the, uh, rate I for notification of request for variances to neighbors in CR-1 unless dense zonings be increased from 300 feet to 1,000 feet. I note that this request is the 20th year anniversary, almost to the day, July 9, 1999, of the supervisor's vote, 5-0, to approve our request for similar notification in, for rezonings. Our current proposal was generated by an application from the Wildlife Museum for our variance to add a digital lighted sign in front of their building and too close to Gates Pass Road. News of this request was very poorly distributed. Most of us heard about it from neighbors via email, and there was some rush to organize, to successfully block the variance. The reason for increasing the zone of notification in neighborhoods like ours is obvious. In high-density neighborhoods, a 300-foot radius may reach a reasonable sample of neighbors who might be concerned about a variance or a zoning request. In CR-1 and less-dense neighborhoods, the number of properties covered is fewer. In fact, as our zonings, a 300-foot notification may not reach beyond the immediately adjacent properties. And notifications are fewer when roads right-of-way or Pima County properties intervene, as was the case with the Wildlife Museum. We simply ask that persons living in low-density zonings have about the same chances of learning about possible variances as do people living where homes are more crowded. Justice was approved for rezonings 20 years ago. Thank you." So, with that read into the record, I don't have any other speaker cards that have been I'd, uh, go ahead and make a motion to, uh, approve zoning code text amendment 18-T-A-00007, industrial zone height and variance notification area text amendment, with the changes suggested by Mr. Carpenter in his letter. Motion in a second. Oh, and close the public hearing. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. I should add that that item included ordinance 2019-10. Items 23 through 29 are rezoning ordinances and rezoning resolutions.
Mr. Chairman, these are hearings. If there's no one in the audience that wishes to address us on these items, move to close the hearings and approve items 23 through, through 29, ordinance, ordinances 2019, 11, 12, 13, 14, and resolutions 2019, 35, 36, and 37.
Second. Motion in a second, close the public hearings and approve items 23 through 29 with the attendant resolutions. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to Pasca Yaki Tribe Shared, State Shared Revenue Program Funds. This is item two on the addendum. Chairman will the item, including resolution 2019-39. Motion in a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to Community Services, Employment and Training, items three, four, five.
Mr. Chairman, if no one wishes to divide the questions, I'll move those items.
Motion in a second to approve items three, four, and five. The second is mine. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to Procurement, items six and seven.
Mr. Chairman, if no one wishes to divide the items, I'll move them.
Um, Madam Chair, or Mister, Mister Chairman, I'd like to divide the question vote on these two items separately. I just had a question on item seven.
Why don't you just ask the question now, and we'll just go with the mo, the motion that we have on the floor? I mean, ask your question about item seven.
Do you want me to do that? Item seven, okay. The question I have on item seven-
It'll work, it's just the same.
Is it just a one-time $600,000 increase? Because you had three years previously for $640,000, and I know it, it's said in there that it was an expanded scope of services. Uh, the question is, is this gonna be $600,000 every year thereafter, or is this just a one-time?
The intention is that it's just a one-time.
Any more discussion? Any objections? Pardon me? We didn't have a second?
I thought you seconded it.
I thought, I, I seconded. Well, I'll, I'll second it, yeah, that's fine. Okay. Are there any objections now that we got it figured out? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, Chair's gonna move items eight, nine, and 10. Motion in a second to approve items eight, nine, and 10 on the addendum.
We already did 10.
You're right. You're right. So, only eight and nine.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve items eight and nine. Discussion? Objections, hearing none, motion carries. Final three items are fireworks permits. Chair will close the public hearing, then move those items.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Hearing no objections, this meeting stands adjourned.